Good to go.
Can you hear us now? We'll see. Sorry, Mark.
Department head discussion, anybody?
I got one thing, kind of related to elections. I was asked about signs being out there. So unless there's an ordinance from a city or county, they can't have signs past a certain date, they can stay up. And what I'm aware of, we don't have anything in any city or county. So as long as they're in private property, right away they can stay.
Perfect. Nothing else? Everybody? Got any engineer updates?
Hi. Couple of things. We took our rock run quotes last, well, two weeks ago, or ended last week. In the previous week, I was going last week. We did get our quote back from Paul. And it was for our 33M gradation, 1573 a ton, and then for our 33 or 34 was 1593 a ton. We estimated about 62,000, 64,800 tons of rock for a total cost of $1,029,784.
And the 33, 34 gradation was what per ton?
The 33M was that inch and an eighth that we use down in the southeast corner. They have significant stockpile left. They crushed specifically for us, we're gonna try to use that. You know, we'll use up more of it this year to get what we can. And then, I guess I didn't, I had the gradations on the stack, but the other one is a regular. What was it per ton? Oh, I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry, all right. It was 1573 a ton for the 33M, and 33, the 1593 for the 33 or 34.
And total tons for the whole project?
64,800 tons. We'll probably move a few miles around a little bit on that. But just as a comparison, last year's quote was $15.18 for the 33M, 1538. So it might up a little bit, you know, everything's going up every year. So if you guys are okay with that, we can act on that, accept that.
Did you ever get with that bridge company to get that rock from them?
That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, I'm gonna move some of the, our operator in the southeast corner had some Level Bs that he put on this rock run. We're gonna swap some of these miles out with that rock and the Level Bs. And then, so we're gonna work on getting that swapped out, moved around. So we're gonna use that rock up. That's only gonna be about the equivalent of maybe three, three miles of Level B. So, so we're, yeah, we're gonna get that worked through.
We have a motion except the rock run bids?
The move.
Motion is our second.
I'll say.
Any other discussion?
Room call, Tom.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Good to go.
Sounds good.
Well, that Christian's here. Did they ever get those trees planted on that dimes quarry?
Yes, we did. Probably three weeks ago, we, we got them and they got planted. So, they look pretty good. I think, as far as I know with Jason, everybody's happy.
Okay.
Yeah, they look, they look really good. If anybody goes by, they're, they're doing well, so. Go. Thank you. And then we did all that Dallas control due, we did that once so far. So, by Jason's and the quarry and everything, so that's all been done.
Any questions out there this year?
Um, yeah, we ended up, we were gonna probably be in there this week, but we ended up sending them out to where, so I'd say end of July, we'll probably be back there. July, August somewhere.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next thing I ask, the annual paint striping. Typically spend, send four quotes out, we only got two back. We got a quote from Camline Painting, who is a regular, the one that does ours, and then Vogel Traffic Services also. Reviewing that, Vogel had a little error in their quote, but what we're getting is Camline was the lowest quote. Now, this quote, we always, it seems like we always have been, we share the quote package with Worth County. So the $111,706.50 includes pretty much half of what Worth County will have. We do have, in this quote, in that total, there's some work in the city of Northwood that they're paying for, and there's some work in St. Ansgar that they're gonna pay for as we come through town. So it's not all ours, but good numbers to compare with. So we'll get that going to.
What was that total amount?
It was, so the, the per gallon cost for paints, 1925 a gallon. And then the stop bars are $40 per stop bar. The railroad cymbals, they're $80 per cymbal. And then stop ahead are $120 a cymbal. I don't think we have any stop aheads in Mitchell County that we are doing.
I don't think there are.
Well, I might have thought about adding some, but I don't believe we've put any in here. Yeah, I did add, I did add two stop ahead symbols in Mitchell County. I gotta remember where we put them. But I think it's another tool for advanced notice for some areas that.
Like painted under stop ahead on.
We'll paint a stop ahead on the surface of the road. Yep, and I've got some Worth County that we're doing, so. And then the total price, the total cost for the quote for both counties was $111,706.50. I did not break down each county, but each county as far as miles, we each did 62 miles. So, I mean, the, the town stuff is probably gonna be a little insignificant compared to the total price, but.
Do you have a motion except the paint? Who bids?
The move.
Motion is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Room call, Mike.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Good. In the next month or so, we're gonna try to get some truck bids sent out to get, looking at getting a couple of new trucks if we can. We've always added the budget, we just keep kinda getting preoccupied with other things that are happening and don't get the quotes sent out. And I wanted the, I wanted the mechanic and the other guys to kinda go through and make sure that our specs that we have sent out in the past are, I guess, adequate for what we want for, for vehicles. So, you know, whether it's a certain brake package or whatever, kinda go through it and reevaluate. We've got, the equipment's changed over the years, and maybe it's some of the stuff we've always put, a spec doesn't even apply anymore. So we'll be putting that stuff through. What I want to put on the agenda for next week, if that's okay, we've got some amendments to some services agreements with WHKS. One amendment is for that Rock I-232 Bridge, which was on Echo. The initial, the initial design was anticipated to be a standard bridge, but the borings indicate that there's rock, shallow rock, and so they've gotta change the design to a different abutment, which increased the cost of the design. So we'll talk about that next week. And then on our, on our Grant Bridge, South McIntyre, we're now in phase four, which will be final design. So there'll be an amendment to that contract. The first initial contract was preliminary and everything else, and now we're gonna head into final design. So bring them up for the agenda next week. I think that's all I've got this morning.
I happened to be going to Riceville last week, and I happened to notice they're painting. Wow, will we do that again this year?
Kinda skipped it last year and.
Last year, this year, yeah.
I don't know if you guys wanna revive it. We, we can't go out, school's out now.
Yeah, it's getting kinda late, so I figured that.
We leave that one on truck there, 150th year, I think?
Yeah.
And Dean uses the other one too in the winter time from the truck. You see that one? Oh, yeah, but I don't know if we wanna revive it. We can revive it next year, or right now, you're not probably gonna get any way to paint, 'cause school's out.
Yeah.
We just try to do it maybe in the spring and let them know when we're done with the plums, they can have them.
You're asking next year?
Yeah. It's always kind of a fun little thing to do and show off, but I don't know. The school's never called and asked if we were still doing it, so it's like, maybe they didn't really have an interest, I don't know.
Yeah. I think Riceville and St. Ansgar did it every year, didn't they? And hopefully it's just.
Yeah, they did it at least two, I think. I think we did, we did three years, and they just kept the first year. I can't remember which one it was now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the January 12th report for May? Shane, I'm bringing it down.
You should have a copy.
I'll see you.
Good to see you.
I'm lying, I have a couple copies. I thought she had one.
Thank you.
It's one of the many you all have, so.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
So actually, I have this one.
I'll call up, probably when I came back and. Are you ready for me, or did you just give me?
Nope, yes.
Okay, so you guys all have the report for this month? So the total money that we collected for the state was $385,941.24. Of that, we kept $12,395.98. We issued 187 driver's licenses. Of those, six of them were out of county, so they paid the extra $10 for the convenience fee. One of them, kind of same Sarah's last month, we get them once a month now, is that, you know, they tried to get their appointment with the state, and it was three weeks out. They just came in. Property taxes collected, I gave them the $92,000. Of that, we had $4,391 in penalties, because for every month that they're late, they get charged 1.5% interest, which is 18% annual, because at that point, the county, the schools and the cities have gone without their money. So the penalty does get collected and sent to them. We have printed in the paper, the delinquent taxes. And the first mailing for, our first email, for some reason, when I ran it, it came back last year's report, so then we repeated this last week. Again, the list, there was 94, I believe, delinquent taxes on the current list. They are rolling in slowly. Usually, when I first started, it was about 84 parcels got sold on the tax sale, which is next Monday, the whole state of Iowa, all the counties. Majority of them are online, do the tax sale, where investors pay the property taxes for individuals. Then they get a certificate. And for the time they hold that certificate every month, they get 2% interest. And if they hold the certificate for two years and pay all the subsequent, if the people are late, they will, they have to do 90-day notice, and then they get deed to the property if no one comes in and pays it. It's a good investment for those who want it. If anyone is interested out there, they can go to our county Facebook page or the treasurer's Facebook page, and there's links to how to get online. Majority of our tax sale participants are not individuals. I think they have two individuals, the rest are big companies in Omaha and Des Moines that actually, that's, they have one branch of their office, the company that does tax sale certificates to get the 2%. And then, a lot of them don't want the properties, but if they do end up with properties and they get title and deed, then they have a separate division that handles those properties, and then they usually sell them.
It's business form.
Yeah, it's all, total business form.
Do they get 2% per month?
Yes, so it's 24%.
2% interest, that's pretty good.
Yeah. It's, it's a good.
Good investment.
Yeah, good place to put your money. And you just have to pay off all the taxes that are due for that property, and then hold it for the two years. And then, like in March, when they're due, like if they have a tax certificate on my property and I did not pay my property taxes, the state gives the person that owns the property 45 days. And after 45 days, then the tax deed, their tax certificate holder can pay those taxes. And then that amount that they paid gets put on the certificate, and they earn 2% on that as well. So it rolls pretty fast. Like I said, that's an online tax sale in Mitchell County. I think there's probably a handful that still do in-office tax sales. So, so if anyone's interested, they can contact me directly as well, so. My, my office is prohibited from participating, because we put people on the tax sale. But we can participate in other counties. And like I said, all 99 counties at Iowa Code, they have a tax sale on the third Monday in June. Special assessments, do we just collect it one? Or we collected multiple right now. We're doing a special assessment for a drainage district. So we did set our $28 tax sale certificates. We redeemed one, an individual got their 90-day notice. And when they notify, they notify all the people that live around, the, any people that own it or any history of them, and they also notify banks if there's a mortgage. So you, a lot of times the banks will stop them and let them know that they gotta get that paid. We've collected $4,306 for futures, which is towards the September taxes. That'll be taken off before anything's figured for collection. And then, interest on investments was $101,268.63. I did have two, one $250,000 CD a month, 300,000 CD. So that's why it was a big jump in interest, because those were cashed out. I think they're, one was six months and one was 12 months. And the slants receipts processed, we processed 44 of the slants receipts in, for a collection of 1.387 million. So total collections for the month were $1.991,767.87. Any questions? So next Monday is the tax sale. Next Thursday, our office is closed. It is District 2 DOT Annual Training in Mason City, All-Stop Training. So we have 11 presenters from the DOT that are coming up. We're gonna talk motor vehicle, driver's license law changes and best practices, so. Either the head of the DOT and the head of the Department of Groundhog come and talks to. They have our needs, my affiliate needs, but as far as all the clerks and deputies, they don't normally get to see them. So it's nice for them to put a face to the people, plus there's a lot of good information.
And up signs up or whatever?
They're already up. It's posted on Facebook, so try to get it out there to everyone, so they know. Plan accordingly. It's not, it's not the last day of the month, so it shouldn't be a crisis if we're not there. And they can pay online or use the Dropbox if they need to.
There you go. Do we have a motion except the treasurer's report for May?
Oh, I don't motion.
Our motion is our second.
I'll say.
Any other discussion?
Room call, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approve the recorder's most report for May. You know, it's not here. It's like we have $8,133.20 collected.
I'm going to approve the recorder's report.
Our motion is our second.
Second.
Go ahead.
Any other discussion?
Room call, Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
All righty. Discussion on mental health advocate?
Morning.
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 I've seen some different emails come through. And then Rachel sent an email out, and I responded. So I think you guys maybe all got that, but just to kinda give you a little update where things are at. Yeah, so after learning of Angela Nastrom's resignation from Mitchell County, I did follow up with her, sent her an email and asked her just some different, some, some questions. And so she just took that email and forwarded it to Saroport County's HR, because Angela also is a mental health advocate for Saroport County. So, so we have not heard back from, from Tom from Saroport. And so we actually contacted Angela West on Friday, just to get an idea of, we just didn't know for sure, did she just resign from Mitchell County? Or did she do, was it both counties? So the way that, that it works for mental health advocates is, of course, every county is required to have an advocate, and the supervisors are, are charged with being responsible for, for hiring the advocate for the county. So I know Jim had reached out and just had asked if we could assist with part of that process, just because, you know, we, we are in the line of, of work with mental health and, and work with mental health advocates. And so when Ashley spoke with Angela, she had just confirmed that, yes, she did resign from, or is resigning from Saroport County as well, as their mental health advocate. And so, again, she, you know, each mental health advocate is per county. So it's, she chose to take on Mitchell County when we had shared Mitchell County with a neighboring mental health advocate that served up to, she, and she currently does, is mental health advocate for Floyd County, but several other counties as well. And she had reached out to us and said that she no longer wanted to, to take on Mitchell County. At the time, this was probably like three years ago or so, and just said, because of travel and different things, she didn't, she's part-time and didn't wanna, and just said, you know, if someone else is interested. Well, Angela was mental health advocate for Saroport, and she resigned here in Mitchell County, and she just said, yes, I can, I can take on Mitchell County. And so that's, that's how she came to Mitchell County, and so grateful for that. She did say that between the two counties, I mean, she averages like 20 to 24 hours a week, so she's part-time, Angela Nastrom. And she, but she said, Mitchell County equates to around an hour a week. So it's very minimal. She has primarily juvenile cases. And, and then, of course, she does, I mean, of course, a mental health advocate, you're assigned when there's a, there's a involuntary committal, right? A mental health committal. So again, that can ebb and flow, because, you know, that just depends. But her, her main case law is, for mental health advocates as adults, is ones that are ongoing. Like they continue to have a mental health committal or like outpatient treatment or something like that. So when, when, as a mental health advocate, when there's a committal, they're responsible for getting reports from the doctor, like for a person who's, say, committed to outpatient services, to make sure that they're going to their appointments and things like that. And so she does reports and reporting on that, and that goes back to the court. Because if a person is not following through with the committal, then there's obviously consequences that, that have to occur to the individual if they're not following the committal. So, so again, it's, her position is an hourly position. And so she, what she, I mean, kinda the way that it works is that she just reports on who it is that she works with, and, you know, submits that to Saroport County. So not to get in too far into the weeds, 'cause it gets a little complicated. But she, so right now, she, again, serves Saroport and Mitchell Counties. In all the other counties that, that are in the CSS region, we, the way that it works is that CSS reimburses the county for the mental health advocates their salary. Okay? So, but in her case, she, again, is primarily Saroport. She serves, you know, Mitchell County, and again, it's a, it's a minimal thing. And so we, CSS has never been invoiced for her Mitchell County time, because CICS, the region in Saroport, in Saroport County, just reimburses that salary. So, so we, right now, are not, CSS is not reimbursing for her Mitchell County time. And again, I think it's a matter of, you know, now that we're all state, it's all through the state our funding, it's, you know, CICS, I'm sure, is just like, okay, well, you know, it's state funding. So it's, you know, it all goes to the state anyway. So because it's so minimal, is what I'm assuming. So just to kinda put that in perspective. But, but typically, I know there was a question about funding and how that works. So typically, so say for, like, an example, Tama County, they're in our region. We get an invoice, or like their ledger every month from their jet, which, so it's the salary for their mental health advocate. It comes out of their general fund in Tama County. And so then they send us that, that invoice, and then CSS reimburses Tama County. So that's just, again, that's just what regions do. They reimburse currently for the mental health advocate's salary. So that's kind of how, how typically it works for other counties within our region. So again, when, when having the conversation with Angela, she, so, you know, we were just kinda like, well, you know, what do you suggest? Because really, it's up to, it's, it's not really like we're, we're sharing the mental health advocate. I mean, we, we do, but yet whoever, you know, Saroport, you know, chooses to hire, it would be up to that person, that mental health advocate, if they wanted to also serve Mitchell County, right? So it might just depend on, because it's not like a joint position, so to speak. I mean, does that make sense? It's, if they wanna take on Mitchell County, then, you know, they could let us, you know, let you know that that's what they wanna do. So, but again, and having, in conversing with, with Angela, she just said, you know, it might, she just recommends initially, maybe you just wanna reach out to the neighboring counties that have mental health advocates in the area, because soon Saroport isn't gonna have one, and we don't know, you know, what that looks like. I do know, you, you had looked on their agenda, and they had, we're gonna discuss it at their board meeting, but we didn't see any minutes were posted before we checked before we came, about where they're at with that. But, I mean, so you have some options. So, yeah, we can, you can wait and see, you know, if Saroport hires, and then, and then ask that person, you know, if they're willing to serve Mitchell County as well. Or we just reach out to neighboring, our neighboring mental health advocates to see if they're even interested in taking on another county. Again, because it's so minimal, you know, that makes, makes sense as well. I mean, either way, it's, it's completely fine. It's just a matter of, you know, we just wanna obviously ensure that we have somebody a mental health advocate to serve Mitchell County, whether that be a mental health advocate adding, you know, Mitchell County, or the Saroport. So, so that's the information that, that we gathered. So questions?
Do you know if our neighboring counties pick on more than one county, or are they?
They do, they do, yep. So, so our, so like, for example, Howard, a mental health advocate, her name is Stephanie, and she serves, yeah, like, I think it's four or five, Chicago, Howard. It's, it's very common for mental health advocates to serve more than one county, because it's, you know, especially if they're full-time or even part-time. Sometimes you serve, like I mentioned, even Angela Nelson. She serves Floyd County and Butler and Brumer and some other counties. And so, yes, it's, they, primarily, most of them do.
Since ours is so minimal, you know?
Yeah.
That email said she suggested contacting Floyd or, it's for Floyd or Howard, but those are two different individuals, so she didn't really mean that. They're, either one of those advocates, if they would be interested.
Right, just adding on. Yes, yep. Because the Floyd advocate is who had Mitchell County before, but gave it up due to, what they must say, the travel. She may not be interested in taking it back, but maybe because it's minimal.
Are you, oh, I'm speaking, are you open to contacting counties? I spoke with you about this, that both of you are much more versed in knowing the right questions to ask, at least as compared to me. I'm not speaking to the whole board, but, so I'm just gonna ask you the question from me. Are you open to kind? Are you open to contacting other counties, other advocates to see if they would share with Mitchell County? Are you open to that?
Sure, absolutely. We know them and work with them and such, so.
That would be acceptable if you would.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I don't really want, if, if Saroport was, if they get somebody and they're open to sharing with Mitchell, I'm not against that, but I also don't want to just wait and see, just to try to keep moving on this to see if somebody is interested.
Is it going to matter when we move on to that district going, are we going to go to Saroport County?
Right, so see, that we don't know. I was just gonna, you know, just kind of highlight on that a little bit too. So, but that's okay. So, so yes, as, as you may have heard, I know I've had some, some different questions. There's, there's a lot of unknowns, I'm going to start with that. But yes, House 8273 was a bill and legislation was, was passed and that deals with HHS. They, they had hired an agency to come into the state and look at the behavioral health system and Health Management Association or something, HMA is their abbreviation. So they came to the state, they did an assessment on the state with behavioral health services and, and the whole system. So out of that assessment came some different recommendations. So as far as having services more consistently available across different regions and different things. And so what came out of that is some, obviously some changes in, in legislation that, that went through and the bill was passed by the governor of the House 8273 to look regarding the behavioral health system. So the, the focus is more on like education, prevention, things like that. So combining both behavioral health and substance abuse disorders together, like that, those populations. So that can, can include substance abuse, gambling, those kind of things. So, so yes, so that bill has been passed and HHS is, has said that they want to divide the state up. Currently, there's thirteen mental health and disability service regions. And what they're, they're looking at for the state is dividing the state into seven behavioral health districts. So, so yes, changes. So obviously, as you can imagine, the districts are going to be larger than what the regions are because there's a lesser amount. And so, so yes, so with that, this, HHS has said that there will be seven behavioral health districts. Now, there is a proposed map that's, that is out there. And, and yes, what you're speaking to, Mitchell and Floyd County are actually, the boundary of the map puts these two, our two counties in, in with the counties to the west. So a different region than what the rest of our counties within CSS are in. A different district, I should say. So these districts are managed by administrative service organizations. You'll hear the abbreviation ASO. That's who oversees the districts to make sure that there's education, prevention, all these different services are available within the districts. So, but again, that map is proposed. So currently the timeline is, there's a timeline that HHS has put out there. And, and they say currently because now we've heard that it may be changing. But what the current proposed timeline is, is that as of July first, there, the HHS movie is supposed to be publishing a statewide behavioral health plan. Okay, so just to say like this is how, you know, this is how everything's going to work. This is how districts are going to, you know, operate, those kind of things. So that is not, has not yet been released. We haven't seen that. We don't even have a, I guess, to date, we're not sure where that's at. So we're waiting for that to come out. And then on August first, again, the proposed timeline is when the, the district map is supposed to be finalized. So because it's in proposed draft, they're still working on that. And then once that gets determined, then there will be an RFP, a request for proposal, out to anyone in the state to apply for, to become an ASO over the districts. So we as CSS, we plan to go through that RFP process and, and to, to become an ASO. That's, that's our plan and we're very transparent about that. Like we, we, we plan to move forward with that. So the state then will make a decision by December 31st of who those ASO, the request for proposal, who that's awarded to. And then, and then we, or whoever gets that RFP would have like six months to prepare because the, we, HHS has said regions will be sunsetting, you know, on July 30th of 2025. So July 1st of 2025, these new districts will be put in, will be in place and operating and all that. So again, though we, that timeline is, you know, we've, we've heard different things that that couldn't, that could change, but that's what they came out with like a few months ago to say the timeline is. So again, a lot of unknowns. And so, yeah, for us, we're, we don't know. It will, will be with, you know, a whole new area or if, if that, what that proposed map will, will look like until we see that final draft. So, but yes, as, as it relates to even mental health advocates or, or any, any like the general assistance services that we provide for Mitchell County, you know, we just don't know yet like exactly what that's going to look like. And then just to add a little something, so we also work with, as you know, mental health and disability services. So the disability services, that whole population, we work with different, you know, community-based waivers and different, different funding streams for people with disabilities. That whole, the disability services is moving out of the mental health umbrella, so to speak, like it currently is, and is moving to the Department of Aging within that whole department within the state. So that's a whole nother, a whole nother shift as well. So they're kind of separating mental health and disability services when currently, I mean, they're together. So, so yeah, so lots and lots of changes we know are going to happen and, and things. We just don't know what it's going to look like, where, where these districts are going to, you know, the boundaries for the districts and, and all of that. So, you know, hopefully we're just waiting to hear and then we'll, we'll find accordingly, you know, to move forward. So just kind of a waiting period right now.
Sounds like it's something that we and you, like you said, just have to wait and adapt, adapt as things happen.
Yes, yes. And when we get more like, you know, concrete information and, and, you know, see your plan and different things like that, we can, we can definitely be welcome to come and, and talk about that and update you kind of on how, how things are going to be going in the next year. So I don't want you to think that we're keeping anything from you. We just don't, there's just a lot of unknowns and so we don't know and so. But yes, I do want to just say though, you know, obviously our focus is on the individuals that we serve and ensuring that they get the services and resources that, that they need. So we're, we are hopeful that with the new behavioral health districts, again, they're larger, but we're hopeful that they will still have local access to be able to continue, you know, to, to go into local offices and get help that they need and, you know, versus having to travel a long distance just to go somewhere for help. So yeah, that's, that's our main concern is, is how they're, you know.
Mr. Oregon?
I have a question for the local experts. Is this a step forward in mental health in the state of Iowa or is this a giant step backwards?
Oh, you know, I think, yeah, I think, I think that there's some good things about it. I mean, I, you know, we've, since I've been around, which has been a long time, you know, I, I agree with having consistent services available. Like people shouldn't be moving to like the CSS region to get more services than what they are, you know, in, you know, central Iowa or something like that. Like I, I totally get that. Like it shouldn't be, you know, differences. Now, again, it's, it's kind of just fragmenting the system a little bit, dividing up behavioral health and disability when we are very versed with that population. Now it's moving to like disability, for example, it's moving to the Department of Aging and, you know, they're used to aging services and, and that's, that is a piece, a little piece of disability, but yet there's a lot more as well. So it's a, it's, it's forcing people to be a little bit more, to, to, to go through more of a, a learning curve to, to be able to facilitate, you know, different services that they're not used to.
Is that a wise decision? Or is that, is that an economic decision that the state is made?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think the, the state now that they, we entered into a contract with them a couple of years ago, they, they are seeing, I mean, I think it's an economic thing that they're looking at as well as again, just having more consistent, give consistent services. I know I'm not answering your question all that well, but, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we don't have a whole lot of say in it. We'll, we'll do what we need to do. We're going to move forward with, like I said, going through these RFP processes and, and hopefully they'll see value in the work that we're doing and, and different things. But I will say that there's going to be, even if we do get, you know, to be an ASO for a behavioral health district, there's going to be some learning curve changes for us because that whole substance abuse population, we, I mean, we, within Mitchell County manages substance abuse budget, but that's very minimal. But this is going to be more, some new different things that we're learning about regarding substance abuse, their services and recovery and things like that, where that's not something that we do. So it's, but we're willing to learn and take that on. I mean, it's, a lot of the, the population with mental health is coexisting. So they have both, mental health and substance abuse issues. And so it's, it's also going to be some learning and new things for us too. So, yeah, it's, it's kind of, you know, our hands are tied. It is what it is. There, you know, we know, like I said, things are going to be happening and changes are going to be made. And it's just a matter of, yeah, a wait and see where we fall and what we, what comes out of, of the whole RFP process.
I kind of, I hate to ask this question, but it's, it is obvious and it's going to probably come up eventually. So if we're downsizing from thirteen to seven, that means we're almost cutting this in half basically. And you ladies represent this area. Are there still going to be people like you in areas? Or does that mean almost half of people like you are going to be not representing areas? I ask that question, but that's.
Well, yeah, no, that's a legitimate question.
Because that means it's services that are actually maybe not being provided compared to what there are now.
Correct. And that's what, that's what I mean when I spoke to the local access, is that, that's our fear for individuals. It's like, yeah, if, I mean, we don't know what that's going to look like. We hope that there's people available in all the counties like there, there is now just because we know, you know, we're a small county and for people, you know, they will tell us who walk in our doors like, oh, it's a, you know, like it's sometimes a challenge just to get transportation to come to our office, let alone to have to, like, you know, like you're referring to, maybe travel further just to get some help. And so, and some people don't like the telehealth or the phone calls and, you know, some people you really do need to meet face-to-face with to complete an application and different things like that. So, so yes, that's, that's definitely like one of our utmost concerns is, you know, we hope that that local access does not go away, but we just don't know. We don't know what that's going to look like. So even like the work, what the work is going to look like. I think when they release that plan, hopefully on July 1st, we'll have a better idea of what the ASO work is going to actually look like and what the ASOs are going to be responsible for. So unknown, like my position is service coordination and not real clear on like what that's going to look like because some of the services that I coordinate are disability services right now, but we know that's moving to the aging, Department of Aging. So we know that piece is going to be gone, but is there something with substance that's going to move in? It's just unclear right now.
Oregon.
I respect your, your involvement in this thing, but the level is not yours. They're trying to fix something from the bottom up here. That's ridiculous. Voting people need to vote with their conscience and what they think we should be doing in Iowa for public health. Local governments should be expressing to our state government to tell them to quit defunding everything, figure out how they can spend their money better. This, this makes no sense to break it up like this and then it's bad. People like you to make the work. It's ridiculous. Let me know, raise your voices about this. Mental health is not, mental health problems are not going to go away. I can't agree with you.
We're serious. Was, was there some dark changes with public health too on this matter too?
Yeah, so they.
This is just, I'm on you too. I'm just listening to this. So yes, there is, but we're about a year behind them. So we will come after the behavioral health, but they are looking at doing the same thing for public health too. I don't know if they're going to minimize the districts like this or what it's going to look like. They may follow the behavioral health plan. There's nothing known right now with public health as much as behavioral health. They have a lot more because there's, is a work in progress right now during this legislative, legislative session. We will probably be on the next legislative session. So in a year from now, we will know much more of what it's going to look like for us, but we're going down the same thing that they are. And, you know, they want, they want to create it where there is a local public health in, in each area. But what that looks like, we don't know. I wish I had more information, but unfortunately we won't know anything probably for a good year at what it's going to look like for public health as well.
The childhood and the decaring station committee and they're going through the same thing. On your timeline, you had mentioned July 1 and then maybe start the July 30th. We were told that it'd be, hopefully July 1 will start 2025. That, that's when we would know. But you're, you're thinking that it would not start until the end of July?
No, it would be June 30th.
June 30th, okay.
When, when, when the mental health and disability services would, I mean, as of June 30th and our, that day, we, we no longer will be, there will no longer be regions. It will be the next day transition to districts.
Okay, yeah, good.
Yeah.
I thought we'd be, I'll be on the same timeline. Yeah, it's not a, it doesn't look pretty good. It's, because they're downsizing there too, is the plan, I think, for the regions.
So we kind of navigated away from advocate into a lot of other areas, but it was all very good information, so.
So, so yeah, back to the advocate. So you would like us to reach out to the, to neighboring county advocates and just see if they're, if they're any interest? Okay? Anything else that you, and then just bring that information to you guys and let you know? Anything else that you would like us to do or?
Do you know what she's done or?
Her resignation.
July 12.
Yep, her resignation letter was July 12.
Last day, right? Without service, I guess. Probably will be, though, won't we?
She says she does not want that to happen. She says it's probably, she'd like it to be July 12th, but she said it's probably not like a hard thing because she doesn't want any counties to go without service, so.
And she was willing to, to work with the new individual. If it was somebody that, now we had neighboring county, I suppose it would be different, but she was willing to work with somebody in order to try to make this happen.
And she did it looking at it.
Yeah, so if you'd like to reach out to them.
Yep, we can do that. Yep, and then we'll circle back and just email you guys and let you know what we found out and go from there.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we can all check the, the minutes from the server. Don't you just again see what they're at and, which is that they, they're going to move forward with this too, obviously. Important position.
Yes.
Something, well, it's in code that, that, you know, there is a mental health advocate for those individuals.
Very good, thank you.
All right, yeah, and we'll keep you updated on the other stuff, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Meetings attended. Ladies, good, I'm going to report on a, a meeting that you were involved with and if I missed something, would you be able to add to it?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I should have caught you before. So I forgot to report on this last week. This has to do with the prescriber role. Um, so I forgot to report on this last week. This has to do with the prescriber role. I forgot to report to last week to the board on our meeting with that with the prescriber role, that individual. And I was just going to bring this up, and if you had anything to add to it, we all need to do it. So, uh, there's a CSS counselor, there was a CSS counselor meeting. And what was happening is we're going to get an individual by the name of, she's a nurse practitioner, uh, titled as the prescriber role. And, uh, they will use a room over at their facility one day a week. Um, one day a week, it's going to be Thursdays, twelve thirty to four, planning on starting, uh, August twenty-ninth or twenty-four. And, uh, we'll see individuals age six and above. Uh, initial visit will be sixty minutes and the thirty-minute follow-ups. We'll be providing needed important services that individuals are currently having to go out of town for us. So can you just touch on what the prescriber role is a little bit?
First off, the prescriber, so she's employed by Prairie Ridge, integrated behavioral health in Mason City. So that's who her employer is. And yes, they're sending her over, um, here, which is, which is great. I mean, I think it's, thank you to the board for allowing office space for that. Um, so, yes, this will just, um, you know, individuals like you said, six, six on up, ages six and up, will have availability to to see a mental health prescriber, um, here locally. Um, again, it's one day a week. I think, I mean, there is potential to maybe increase that, but they just kind of want to, you know, um, kind of just gauge that to see, see how busy that they are. But, um, I know that she had mentioned, like, she can do some different injections and, I mean, all of all of that. So versus having to travel all the way to Mason City here or wherever people go, um, to see that prescriber. And, yeah, the hospital staff was there, public health was there. Um, so they're, you know, trying to get the word out in the community that this is going to be available. And, um, I know everyone was pretty excited about that and just to have that, um, those kind of resources here in in the small county, so.
Okay, thanks.
This is Jessa too. I'd like to add to that. Can you guys hear me okay?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, um, so a prescriber is different too than a mental health individual or a therapist too. So the nice thing with this too is she can change dosages to meds, um, and give meds and see those individuals. However, we are hoping to, along with her, um, eventually get a mental health therapist on board as well too. Um, I work very close with Prairie Ridge and, um, it's kind of my goal to keep, um, getting that so we have more access to even a therapist here in Mitchell County and that way they can work side by side. They are short therapists right now at Prairie Ridge and don't have that availability to bring one. Um, but I'm hoping we can stay first on the list. Um, I meet frequently with them and always keep them in mind, hey, you guys serve Mitchell County. Let's bring someone here, um, just so we have that access available to it. Um, public health here will be involved quite a bit with it. They may be using our room as well to take vitals, um, because they will be sending a a med aide um, with the prescriber, um, just to get them checked in. Um, they'll probably check in over at our area too and sit in our waiting room. So they're not just sitting out in the open area, um, more of a closed area. Um, and so we'll help with that process too, um, so they can get seen. Um, and then hopefully we can bring more here to Mitchell County, um, with a therapist along with them, which will be amazing. And they'll just share that room. Um, and, you know, there'll be different days that they're here. Um, but it'll be nice. I know the schools were involved in the meeting too. They're looking forward to that, um, as well, just to push out to parents. So it's going to be amazing here in the community. Hopefully we can keep them around and they'll be able to add more days to it, um, as well. So as Megan said, I appreciate you guys allowing us to get that room over there. Um, they will keep nothing in there so Dave can go in and out, um, and adjust the temperatures. It will be locked, um, but if he needs to go in there, um, there'll be no confidential information that will be left here. It'll travel with them. Um, there is a referral process. You guys can contact us. They're giving us updated packets. I have a meeting with them tomorrow. Um, and they're going to give us packets for referrals, um, so we can help with that process. Um, people can contact our office or Megan and and Ashley, the clinic, and we all have the same information of how to get that referred to this prescriber coming to town. So, um, hopefully we can get them here a couple of days a week. Um, we have the clientele that will need full days or multiple days and and go from there. So it's huge for Mitchell County.
I was just going to share Jessa, turns on the Prairie Ridge, right? Really did a nice job advocating to get this prescriber over here. I think it'll be a great support to our primary care providers at the clinic, um, as well as, like she mentioned, the schools where they see that frustration from parents with having pulled their kids from school, take them out of town to see their med prescriber or whatever. So it'll be really nice to have a local option. She did a good job with advocating for that, so.
Thank you, the three of you. You explained that much better than I could, so I appreciate that, all three of you. That's all I have.
Mike? Good night, Mike. I have none this week.
Um, I, uh, had a fair board, uh, Fri- I helped, um, uh, Friday night out with them last Friday. Uh, unbelievable. I don't know where where everybody came from, but it's interesting that we were getting comments down there that Stacyville had their night on Wednesday night and they said it was unbelievable up there Wednesday night too. So people are getting out. And then I had a fair board meeting last night. Um, contracts for everything for the fair are, um, coming in every day. Bands are lined up. We're going to pour a bigger spot for, in the wheelchairs in the grandstands. That was one thing last year that it was, we had more in wheelchairs there than what we could kind of handle. So we'll be pouring a bigger slab for those. And then, um, adding four, possibly five more pedestals in the south, southeast corner. Um, and I think I told you that the, from the last fair board meeting, and they're already spoken for for the week of the fair. And then, um, also for the, there's, um, I don't know, like, horse group, people that come to town and and use the arena and stuff and they like to camp right there too, so that'd be nice if you were to buy that arena. So, um, and then, uh, the, um, parades are coming up. They're going to be in the St. Asger, Stacyville Sage Parades coming up this summer, so. Good meeting, so then that's it.
Okay. Uh, my nerve management plan update?
Happy Fork Incorporated, twenty-three forty, four hundred and tenth Street, Osage, and Double K Farming, eleven thirty-four, four hundred and streets in Asger.
Public comments, any public comments? Public comments? All right, cameras to vote for the June fourth primary election.
Want to gather so you can sign?
Yes.
Do you need to wear color?
No. So we had two for the novels. Um, one had the plus an absentee ballot and then they said they threw it away, so they voted on election day. So we confirmed that they did not turn their absentee ballots, so their one on election day did count. Um, then we have another provisional ballot here that they didn't have a proof ID. And so they had time to vote canvas to bring it in and they did not, so this one will not count. So we'll start with that. Okay, so we'll start with United States Representative District Two for Democrat. Sarah, you're not there. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, Sarah Corcoran, precinct one thirteen, precinct two ten, precinct three eight, precinct four seventeen, precinct five five, precinct six nine, precinct seven six, precinct eight five, precinct nine sixteen, precinct ten five, precinct eleven three, precinct twelve one, for a total of ninety-eight. And there was one write-in in precinct seven, one in precinct nine, for a total of two. Two undervotes in precinct one, one undervote precinct four, three undervotes in precinct nine. Um, there were zero overvotes. Um, so US Representative District Two Republican, Ashley Hinson. Precinct one seventy-eight, precinct two forty-seven, precinct three thirty-seven, precinct four seventy-five, precinct five thirty-eight, precinct six fifty-one, precinct seven one thirty-six, precinct eight one twenty-seven, precinct nine one eighteen, precinct ten forty-one, precinct eleven nineteen, precinct twelve twenty-eight, for a total of seven ninety-five. One write-in in precinct one, two write-ins precinct four, one write-in precinct seven, one write-in precinct eight, three write-ins precinct nine, for a total of eight write-ins. Seven undervotes at precinct one, five undervotes precinct two, three undervotes precinct three, seventeen undervotes precinct four, three undervotes precinct five, one undervote precinct six, nineteen undervotes at precinct seven, twenty undervotes precinct eight, eleven undervotes precinct nine, two undervotes precinct ten, one undervote precinct eleven, two undervotes precinct twelve. There are no overvotes. Um, so for Libertarian, there was no one on the ballot. So we do have to mark winners for the each race that there was and anyone on the ballot that there was a write-in. There were some that people go in the circle and then it's blank. If there's any that doesn't have anyone listed, that's why, because the winner was blank. Um, so just to explain those, then we have to notify the winners for those districts and races that there wasn't anyone on the ballot, that they won with the write-in. Um, so US Representative District Two for Libertarian, Ashley Hinson. Precinct three had two votes. And then there was, uh, one write-in in precinct five and one write-in precinct ten. Um, undervotes one at precinct one, two at precinct two, for a total of three, and there were no overvotes. Um, State Senator District Thirty, Democrat, Richard Lawrence. Precinct one fourteen, precinct two ten, precinct three eight, precinct four sixteen, precinct five five, precinct six nine, precinct seven six, precinct eight four, precinct nine sixteen, precinct ten five, precinct eleven three, for a total of ninety-six. There is two write-ins at precinct four, one at precinct seven, one at precinct nine, for a total of four. There was one undervote at precinct one, one undervote at precinct eight, three undervotes at precinct nine, one undervote at precinct twelve. No overvotes. State Senator District Thirty for Republican, Wayland Brown. Precinct one fifty-three, precinct two thirty-two, precinct three thirty, precinct four sixty-four, precinct five thirty-six, precinct six forty-four, precinct seven one oh three, precinct eight eighty-one, precinct nine eighty-four, precinct ten twenty-eight, precinct eleven sixteen, precinct twelve twenty-six, for a total of five hundred and ninety-seven. Doug Campbell, precinct one thirty, precinct two twenty, precinct three nine, precinct four twenty-six, precinct five five, precinct six eight, precinct seven forty-seven, precinct eight sixty-six, precinct nine forty-eight, precinct ten fifteen, precinct eleven four, precinct twelve four, for a total of two hundred and eighty-two. There were zero write-ins. There was three undervotes at precinct one, one undervote at precinct three, four undervotes at precinct four, six undervotes at precinct seven, one undervote at precinct eight, and there were no overvotes. Um, State Senator District Thirty for Libertarian, there were three write-ins. So there was a tie, one of each. Um, so we need to draw for that.
Which one is this from, you've seen that?
State Senator District Thirty Libertarian. So, Mark Van Dolen. All right, so Richard Lawrence, and he lives from precinct three.
He's a big kid, for sure.
So what happens is we let the state know the state's committee that he received one. So then for any of these that received the write-in wins, they have seven days from the canvas to turn in their affidavit of candidacy. Um, someone like Richard probably will not accept because he's going to be the Democratic winner, I believe. So it's just the process of how you do it. Um. So I will have to print the sheet upstairs again, just for you to assign on there. Um, so we'll do State Representative District Sixty, Democrat. Um, so write-in. Okay, there was no winner for this one for us. Um, but there were write-in precinct one had three, precinct three had one, precinct four had one, precinct six had two, precinct seven had two, precinct eight had one, precinct nine had two. Um, there were twelve undervotes at precinct one, ten undervotes at precinct two, seven undervotes at precinct three, seventeen undervotes at precinct four, five undervotes at five, seven undervotes at precinct six, five undervotes at precinct seven, four undervotes at precinct eight, eighteen undervotes at precinct nine, five undervotes at precinct ten, three undervotes at precinct eleven, and one undervote at precinct twelve. No overvotes. Um, State Representative District Sixty for Republican. Precinct one, Jane, Jane Bloomingdale. Precinct one fifty-eight, precinct two thirty-five, precinct three twenty-six, precinct four sixty-seven, precinct five thirty-one, precinct six forty-two, precinct seven one nineteen, precinct eight ninety-nine, precinct nine eighty-nine, precinct ten thirty-three, precinct eleven seventeen, precinct twelve twenty-one, for a total of six hundred and thirty-seven. John Rosenfeld, precinct one twenty-five, precinct two sixteen, precinct three fourteen, precinct four twenty, precinct five ten, precinct six nine, precinct seven thirty, precinct eight forty-four, precinct nine forty, precinct ten nine, precinct eleven three, precinct twelve eight, for a total of two hundred and twenty-eight. Um, there were no write-ins. There were three undervotes at precinct one, one undervote at precinct two, seven undervotes at precinct four, one undervote at precinct six, seven undervotes at precinct seven, five undervotes at precinct eight, three undervotes at precinct nine, one undervote at ten and twelve. There are no overvotes. State Representative District Sixty for Libertarian. Jane Bloomingdale had one at precinct three, one at precinct ten, for a total of two. And there is one write-in at precinct three. Um, no overvotes and one undervote at precinct one, two undervotes at precinct two, one undervote at precinct five, for a total of four. Um, County Board of Supervisors, District Two, Democrat. Uh, Jim Weary, precinct one had two, precinct four had one, for a total of three. There were two write-ins at precinct one for, at precinct four, there was three write-ins for a total of five, eleven undervotes at precinct one, fourteen undervotes at precinct four, and one undervote at precinct twelve. And there were no overvotes. Uh, County Board of Supervisors, District Two, Republican. Alan Winters, precinct one twenty-three, precinct four thirty, precinct twelve twelve, for a total of sixty-five. James A. Weary, precinct one sixty-three, precinct four sixty-three, precinct twelve eighteen, for a total of one fourteen. There are zero write-ins, one over, one undervote at precinct four, and there are no overvotes. Um, for County Board of Supervisors, District Two, Libertarian. There was one undervote at precinct one. Um, County Board of Supervisors, District Four, Democrat. Uh, Pam Marzen, precinct seven three, and there was four write-ins at precinct eight, four undervotes at precinct seven, one undervote at precinct eight. No overvotes. County Board of Supervisors, District Four, Republican. Pam Marzen, precinct seven eighty-six, precinct eight ninety-two, for a total of one seventy-eight. Michael Mayer, precinct seven sixty-one, precinct eight nineteen, for a total of eighty. Stan Walk, precinct seven seven, precinct eight thirty-five, for a total of forty-two. No write-ins, two undervotes at precinct seven, two undervotes at precinct eight. No overvotes. County Board of Supervisors, District Four, Libertarian. Um, there was nothing. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Democrat. Jerry Rashatar, precinct nine nineteen, precinct ten five, for a total of twenty-four. There was one write-in at precinct nine, no undervotes, no overvotes. Uh, County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Republican. Mark Morley-Hendrickson, precinct nine one fourteen, precinct ten thirty-eight, for a total of one fifty-two. There were six write-ins in precinct nine. There are six write-ins in Precinct Nine, 12 undervotes at Precinct Nine, five undervotes at Precinct Ten. No overvotes. County Board of Supervisors, District Five, Libertarian, Mark Hendrickson has one for Precinct Ten. No undervotes, no overvotes. County Auditor, Democrat, this is one that the blanks won. So write-ins, there's one at Precinct One, one at Precinct Three, two at Precinct Four, two at Precinct Six, one at Precinct Seven, two at Precinct Eight, three at Precinct Nine. For a total of 12. There's 14 undervotes at Precinct One, 10 undervotes at Precinct Two, seven undervotes at Precinct Three, 16 undervotes at Precinct 14. Four, sorry, not 14. Undervote, five undervotes at Precinct Five, seven undervotes at Precinct Six, six undervotes at Precinct Seven, three undervotes at Precinct Eight, 17 undervotes at Precinct Nine, 500 votes at Precinct Ten, three undervotes at Precinct Eleven, and one at Precinct Twelve. No overvotes. And County Auditor, Republican, Rachel Foster, Precinct One, 77. Precinct Two, 48. Precinct Three, 37. Precinct Four, 81. Precinct Five, 38. Precinct Six, 47. Precinct Seven, 131. Precinct Eight, 136. Precinct Nine, 126. Precinct Ten, 39. Precinct Eleven, 19. Precinct Twelve, 27. For a total of 806. Write-in, Precinct One, 2. Precinct Four had one write-in, Precinct Seven had four, Precinct Nine had three, for a total of 10 write-ins. Undervotes, Precinct One, 7. Precinct Two, 4. Precinct Three, 3. Precinct Four, 12. Precinct Five, 3. Precinct Six, 5. Precinct Seven, 21. Precinct Eight, 12. Precinct Nine, 3. Precinct Ten, 4. Precinct Eleven, 1. And Precinct Twelve, 3. For a total of 78. Undervotes, zero. Overvotes. County Auditor, Libertarian, Rachel Foster, Precinct Three had two, Precinct Five had one, Precinct Ten had one, for a total of four. There was one write-in in Precinct Two. Undervotes, Precinct One, 1. Precinct Two, 1. For a total of two. Zero overvotes. County Sheriff, Democratic ballot, Greg Beaver, Precinct One, 2. Precinct Four, 2. Precinct Six, 1. Precinct Seven, 1. Precinct Eight, 2. Precinct Nine, 4. Precinct Ten, 2. For a total of 14. Write-ins, there was two at the Precinct One. Precinct Four had one. Precinct Six had two. Precinct Seven had one. Precinct Eight had one, for a total of seven. Undervotes, Precinct One, 11. Precinct Twelve, 10. Precinct Three, 8. Precinct Four, 15. Precinct Five, 5. Precinct Six, 6. Precinct Seven, 5. Precinct Eight, 2. Precinct 19, 9 is 16. Precinct Ten is 3. Precinct Eleven is 3. Precinct Twelve is 1. For 85 undervotes and there's zero overvotes. County Sheriff, Republican, Gregory Beaver, Precinct One, 84. Precinct Two, 49. Precinct Three, 40. Precinct Four, 90. Precinct Five, 41. Precinct Six, 51. Precinct Seven, 143. Precinct Eight, 142. Precinct Nine, 126. Precinct Ten, 42. Precinct Eleven, 20. Precinct Twelve, 30. For a total of 858. Write-ins, there were two at Precinct One, one at Precinct Two, three at Precinct Seven, two at Precinct Nine, one at Precinct Ten, for a total of nine. Undervotes, there were two at Precinct Two, four at Precinct Four, one at Precinct Six, ten at Precinct Seven, six at Precinct Eight, four at Precinct Nine, for a total of 27. Zero overvotes. County Sheriff, Libertarian, Greg Beaver had one at Precinct Two, two at Precinct Three, one at Precinct Five, one at Precinct Ten, for a total of five. There's no other write-ins. There was one undervote at Precinct One, one undervote at Precinct Two, there were two undervotes, zero overvotes.
Could you look at the District Two Supervisor, Republican, she begin? I just wanted to know if the numbers were different from what the preliminary was. I thought you said, because I had 114 votes and the preliminaries showed 144, so I just, and maybe I heard you wrong.
Yep, 63 for Precinct One, 63 for Precinct Four, 18 Precinct Twelve, for a total of 144.
Okay, all right, I heard you wrong, I'm sorry.
Yep.